Good evening. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me? Father, we thank you for the gift and the beauty of this day and for the many blessings we frequently take for granted. Father, we ask a special blessing on all of those that provide services for us, whether they be near or whether they be far away. We ask that you equip them to meet the challenges of the day and of the hour. We ask that you be with us this evening, guard our thoughts, guide us and direct us, for we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen. Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, will you call the role, please?
Counselor Striplin, Counselor Wood, Counselor Brown, Counselor Starnes, Counselor Chambliss, Counselor Bowles, Counselor Boone.
Call the meeting to order. Character trait of the month is resourcefulness, making wise use of what others might overlook or discard. Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the public hearing in the City Council meeting held January 21st, 2014. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Is there anyone present that would like to make comments concerning anything on tonight's agenda? Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. Before I get into that, may I have a point of privilege?
Yes, sir.
And at this time, I'd like to ask Debbie Yarber to come up regarding the Alabama Peace Officers Association essay contest. I think she has a lot to deliver to us.
Hello, I'm with the Alabama Peace Officers Association. I'm a retired lieutenant with the Prattville Police Department, and every year, the APOA does a drug essay contest for the eighth graders all over the state of Alabama. And I'm just tickled death to know that Prattville Junior High won all four places in the Southern District this year, and I have over $700 I'd like to hand out to these winners. I want to call out first Ms. Libby Bruce. She's the winner, the teacher of our essay winners, and I'm going to use her to help me get the awards out. She receives $100 for having the first-place winner, and this is to help her buy school supplies. More writing books. Okay, I will start with the fourth-place winner. He wins, she wins, $75, and that's Erica N. Okay, our third-place winner and a winner of $125 is Leanna Taylor. And our second-place winner is Jeffrey Mooney, and he wins $200. And our first-place winner is Emily Jackson, and not only does Emily Jackson win $300 cash, she also receives a scholarship, $500 scholarship from Troy State.
You already tried it? Well, great. Well, you know, at this time, I'd like to say that I've noticed our Superintendent of Education is in the crowd, Mr. Spence-AG, and he's here for this occasion, and without a lot of his guidance and direction, you know, these students might not be able to do everything that they've been able to accomplish. So, thank you for being here, and thank you for all the work that you do. Also, as I extend my point of privilege, you know, sometimes when you get that, you just have to run with it. And at this point in time, I'd just really like to say a real big thank you to the City of Prattville employees who recently had our bad weather day, a couple of bad weather days there in a row, but because of their due diligence, they were able to help this city weather that storm to, I think, the best that it could. We actually had a department head meeting this morning talking about the weather, looked over things that we did correctly, things that we could improve a little bit on, but it hadn't been for the dedication of the department heads and the employees, it would have, Prattville would have not fared it near as well. We had our police department and fire department out there in the weather. We also had our Robbie Anderson and his street department, engineering department, out there in the weather with the sand equipment, which, you know, that was sort of the first round of it. The second round of it was sort of when all the ice and the snow got out of the way, but when we still had a sort of a backlog of sanitation, garbage, and they had to be picked up. But then also, we had some facility maintenance that had to be taken care of pretty quickly, because we did have some pipes to break. And so, because of all their due diligence, they were able to get a lot of the bathrooms and other facilities back up in operation through facility maintenance. But then, in our sanitation department, because it was such a big backlog because of the several days that the city in that area was sort of put on temporary hold, the urban management department was asked to step up and through direction, I want to say thank you to Michael Whaley also, because with him stepping up and being able to help pull a lot of those crews together with Devon Peak and working with Walter Love, you know, they were just able to go ahead and get all the garbage picked up in a timely manner. So, I want to say thank you to all those city employees that helped this city of Prattville weather that storm as well as we did. And if you wouldn't mind, I'd sure like to give them a round of applause at this time. And just one last comment before I really sort of close that chapter and move on into our night, our tonight's mayor's report. Those were some of the frontline people. We also had our wastewater department people who were there every hour of the day, taking their shifts there, but sometimes they're a little bit out of sight, out of mind. But then there's also one other department that's that same way, and it's our vehicle maintenance department. I know they went through probably pretty close about 100 pair of wiper blades during this time period because of all the ice and snow that was out there, and they were able to take care of all the equipment and everything else. And so, I want to say, you know, thank you on that also, because without you guys being able to keep that, keeping us, the mechanized, service-oriented organization that we are, rolling and moving, we would have truly been as much of a standstill with the snow and the ice if it had not been for the equipment that you were able to keep rolling there. So, if we can give that crew a round of applause, I'd appreciate that. Then after that, the paperwork starts coming in, HR starts having to go through a lot more things. So, you know, when you look at one little event, it actually, when you start looking at all the steps it has to go through to get us back into a state of normalcy, it can really be a lot behind the scenes that the average person does not even know. But I'm going to move right on along, because when I get through this report, I will be going back to Birmingham. I actually left Council President Willie Wood in Birmingham with the EDAA Winter Conference. Noticed that Joel Duke, city planners, made it back. He was up there, and I was up there also, helping represent the city and also learning a lot about the inner going-ons of municipalities and so forth. But I really came back here to see you guys. You know, I just, I could not stay that long without seeing you guys. But then also, there was an announcement today, I think most everybody knows about it, but the LPGA is back in Prattville, is back in a big way, and it's thanks to a lot of the efforts of Dr. Bronner, Sun Belt Golf, and RTJ Golf Trail. Yokohama Tires has signed a three-year agreement to sponsor the Yokohama Tire LPGA Classic in Prattville. The tournament dates have been released. They are September the 15th through the 21st. The tournament runs September the 18th through the 21st, with special events preceding the tournament on September the 15th through the 17th. But anyway, a lot to go on during that department head meeting. Also, that I mentioned earlier, we also discussed about the LPGA, because there's a lot of logistics, behind-the-scenes stuff, everything from city crews that help out with a lot of in-kind services. So, we have a lot of work to do to get ready for this great event coming back to Prattville. One other announcement, I did get a message from Representative Beckman. He texted me this afternoon to inform me that House Bill 340 and Senate Bill 273, aka the Prattville Weed Abatement, that I know Councilman Bowles, you pushed pretty heavily for it, they have passed the first phase and expected to move forward on that. So, hopefully, we'll have some kind of positive result on that, which actually helps streamline a lot of the activities that, procedures they have to go through and help them make our city look to be the great city that we are. But let's see, another thing is that you may or may not have noticed recently on the street banners that we have had lining downtown area, they have gotten, they're starting to show their age. And with a lot of due diligence and also a little memory searching, I'd like to say thank you to Teresa Lee. She was actually remembered that several years ago, that, and Robbie Anderson was also a part of this, but several years ago, some street banners had been put up, and then we had to take those back down, and they were able to find those. They had been put in storage, and this is one to my right over here. We're actually able to, we'll start putting these up in the very near future, but a lot of that goes also a thank you to the citizens and partner Prattville, Tommy Brown. He's given us permission to use these banners with Prattville written in what is known as the Daniel Pratt font, and we're grateful to him for his artwork and his authorization to use these. Tommy has contributed greatly to our city in the way of artwork, history, and Pratt Gin articles, artifacts, which, all of which we have never had without him. Please join me in thanking him whenever you see him out and about in downtown Prattville or any other area of Prattville. Couple other announcements, annual Black History Program, it's Friday night, February the 7th, at 6:00 PM, the Doster Center. I'll be there, so hope I'll be able to see everybody else there. The annual Mardi Gras Parade is February 15th at 1:00 PM. Our event is being coupled with the Service League's Chili Cook-Off. Dinner's open 11:00, Chili Cook-Off at 11:30, and the parade starts rolling at 1:00 PM. I guess that's part of my public service announcement. With that said, after this, if there's any questions or comments directed, I'm going to be heading back to Birmingham to finish up the EDAA Winter Conference.
Any questions?
Mayor, would you have five minutes for me after the meeting?
Most certainly. It'd be somewhere around I-65.
Drive safely. Thank you.
We do wish you safe travels, both up there, and you and Mr. Wood returning back to Prattville. So, looking forward to getting a lot of information. Well, thank you. And have a good night. Thank you. We also have present with us this evening, Mr. Lee Hammett, Associate Director of AIDT. We appreciate you being with us this evening. Thank you. At this time, we'll move into reports from the Council on Special Committees. Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Starnes?
No, sir.
Counselor Chambliss?
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles?
No, sir.
Counselor Boone?
No, sir.
Well, I had two committee meetings that I'll briefly provide you an update on. Sanitation Committee met last week. Committee reviewed plans for route optimization options for both household garbage and yard trash debris. Ideally, the changes will occur within six months, and a marketing program is being planned to announce these changes to the citizens before the plan is implemented. We're also working towards a specifically assigned driver to each specific vehicle, and while this may sound like a trivial matter, from experience, action of this nature invokes ownership, pride, and accountability for each specifically assigned vehicle. Wastewater Committee also met. Wastewater Department is continuing to face the challenges of staying within our regulatory compliance while utilizing and maintaining aged equipment, with the knowledge that within three to five years, the Pine Creek Facility will need to be upgraded and expanded. Thus, every major equipment investment that is made is made with the understanding that this purchase will have to fit into the new facility. Purchases are limited, but repairs are ongoing and very costly. Wastewater is also considering offering the Recycle Grease Program, which was successfully used in Montgomery. The purpose of this public awareness program is to keep both household and restaurant grease out of the sewer system. Montgomery reports that the system has been successful and is offering assistance if we decide to implement. Also, Wastewater is reviewing a program sponsored by the National League of Cities concerning help with maintaining lateral sewer lines from a home to the street. The program would require some homeowner participation, and the purpose is to reduce the groundwater infiltration into the sewer system, thereby reducing the water that is treated and reducing the chemical cost. When the particulars of these programs are finalized, public announcements will be made using all the normal lines of city communication. At this point, we'll move forward into our agenda. The first item is foreign consent agenda. The first item is to authorize a city attorney to proceed with legal action against the property owners of 210 Cherry Drive, Prattville, Alabama. Resolution Number Two, to establish a neighborhood traffic calming policy for the City of Prattville. Resolution Three is to set a public hearing for a retail liquor license for Matthew Ellis and Frederick Montgomery of Chipotle Mexican Grill. Resolution Number Four is to set a public hearing for a retail beer on or off premises and retail wine on or off premises license for Courtney Hicks and Stephanie Nixon of Queen Meats and Wine LLC. Chair will entertain a motion for the formation of a consent agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this? All those in favor of creating a consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign, motion carries. Is there any further discussion on these items? Chair will entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign, motion carries. We'll move into our regular agenda items. Resolution Number One, to authorize the hiring of one equipment operator to fill a previously non-filled or newly budgeted position in Urban Management Department at a cost not to exceed $20,834 for salary and benefits. Counselor Boone, will you read this?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Urban Management Department has a need to hire one equipment operator, and whereas the City Council has adopted a resolution requiring council authorization to fill previously non-filled or newly budgeted positions, and whereas the cost of said employee for the remainder of FY 2014 will not exceed $20,834 for salary and benefits, and whereas this is a budgeted position in the Urban Management Department. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $20,834 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one Urban Management Equipment Operator, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2014 budget line items, Urban Management, salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this matter? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign, motion carries. Resolution Number Two, to authorize the hiring of four service maintenance workers to fill previously non-filled or newly budgeted positions in the Urban Management Department at a cost not to exceed $73,074 for salaries and benefits. Counselor Boone, will you read this one?
Whereas the City of Prattville Urban Management Department has a need to hire four service maintenance workers, and whereas the City Council has adopted a resolution requiring council authorization to fill previously non-filled or newly budgeted positions, and whereas the cost per employee for the remainder of FY 2014 will not exceed $18,268.50 for salary and benefits, and whereas these are budgeted positions in the Urban Management Department. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $73,074 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring four Urban Management Service Maintenance Workers, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2014 budget line items, Urban Management, salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this matter? All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign, motion carries. Resolution Number Three, to release funds for the purchase of one TYMCO Model 600 Regenerative Air Sweeper from Ingram Equipment through the HGAC Purchasing Cooperative, contract number SW04-12, for the Engineering Department at a cost not to exceed $177,680. Counselor Brown, will you read this, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need for one TIMCO Model 600 Regenerative Air Sweeper in the Engineering Department, and whereas in Resolution Book 2013, page 083, the City Council authorized entering into a cooperative purchasing agreement with the Houston-Galveston Area Council, and whereas the said street sweeper is available through HGAC Contract Number SW04-12 from Ingram Equipment at a cost not to exceed $177,680. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds in an amount not to exceed $177,680 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Ingram Equipment or TIMCO Incorporated, and funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2014 budget line item Engineering Department slash capital outlay. Mr. President, so moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this matter? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign, motion carries. Resolution Number Four, to amend the FY 2014 budget and to release funds for the purchase of two 2014 or newer Capital Chevrolet Tahos from Capital Chevrolet through state contract T191L, contract number 4012396, for the Police Department at a cost not to exceed $52,000, net cost to the city not to exceed $26,000. Counselor Chambliss, would you introduce this, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need for two 2014 or newer Chevrolet Tahos in the Police Department, and whereas said vehicles are available through state contract T191L, contract number 4012396, from Capital Chevrolet at a cost not to exceed $26,000 each, and whereas one vehicle will be purchased with federal drug proceeds, and one vehicle will be purchased with state drug proceeds, and whereas the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas Task Force will reimburse the City of Prattville for the vehicle purchased with the federal drug proceeds over a period of three years. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that FY 2014 budget reserve is hereby decreased by $47,100. FY 2014 budget line grant revenue is hereby increased by $4,900, and the FY 2014 budget line item Department capital outlay is hereby increased by $52,000. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds in an amount not to exceed $52,000 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Capital Chevrolet, and funds are approved and appropriated from FY 2014 budget line item Police Department capital outlay. So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on the matter? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Excuse me, raise your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. Motion passes. Resolution Number Five, to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Constantine Engineering for engineering services for sidewalk improvements at a cost not to exceed $24,000. Counselor Brown, will you introduce the motion?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city received Transportation Alternatives Grant, TAPA-TA13, for the construction of sidewalks on various streets serving Prattville Elementary and intermediate schools, and whereas the city desires to retain Constantine Engineering Incorporated to purveyor engineering plans and construction documents for the sidewalk project, and whereas said engineering services are available from Constantine Engineering at a cost not to exceed $24,000, and whereas the cost of said engineering services is a budgeted expense. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is authorized and empowered to enter into an agreement with Constantine Engineering Incorporated for said engineering services. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in an amount of $24,000 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Constantine Engineering Incorporated, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2014 budget line item miscellaneous contract services. So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this matter? Yes, sir.
I have a point of privilege and ask Mr., or City Engineer Robbie to come forward for a second. This project is completely in my district, and I want to make sure that we can have a, some type of little community meeting with the neighborhood before we move forward on this project, because a lot of the neighbors that the yards are hitting, they don't want it. The yards that are in the back of the neighborhood wants it for their kids' safety. So, I'd like to have some type of meeting with everybody to get everybody on the same page before we go moving dirt and moving forward and having people down here screaming at us. How would we, do you have any advice on how we can move forward on a community project? Can I call you or set a time?
Sure, be happy to do that. Probably give us a little time to get started, to get some maps, to kind of show something. Right now, we just have, you know, basically, when we're prepared.
Great. Well, would you get with me when you're ready for it, and I will send a letter out or something?
We should have plenty of time. Of course, this is going to be a state project, so we'll have a lot of time to get this.
But this is going to be hitting this summer, right?
We would hope so, yes.
Yeah, so it'll be here like that.
It will be.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign, motion carries. This concludes our agenda for this evening. At this time, we ask for comments from any one present that would like to speak on any topic addressing the council. Yes, sir?
Lee Hammett with AIDT. I've been Prattville 42 years.
Come to the podium. Come to the podium, please, so everybody can enjoy it.
Again, I'm Lee Hammett with AIDT. Been in Prattville about 42 years. My wife knows more people in Prattville than I do because I travel all the time. But all I wanted to say is the mayor's gone, so I can talk about him now. I did run into the mayor and Councilman Wood at the EDA conference this week, and I just wanted to tell the council, I appreciate them being there. I've been in economic development all my life, and it means so much for a city to be at these conferences and to represent the city. And let me tell you, Councilman Wood and your mayor were doing one heck of a good job, and I was proud to be a Prattvillian at that meeting. And I just want to say thank you to the council for supporting that kind of effort because it means a lot to the city.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? At this time, we'll move into our closing comments. Counselor Brown?
Yes, sir. There'll be a street committee meeting on Tuesday, February 11th at 3:30 in the City Hall Annex.
Counselor Starnes?
No, sir.
Counselor Chambliss?
Yes, sir. We'll be looking to schedule a police committee meeting in the near, near future.
Counselor Bowles?
No, sir.
Counselor Boone?
Yes, sir.
And in my closing remarks, sometimes you find that others do a much better job of framing the message that you want to send. And so, with your indulgence to my, to express my appreciation to those involved in our snow weather last week, I found a letter written by Montgomery's mayor, Todd Strange, changing only a few of Mayor Strange's words. His thoughts are mine, and I share them with you now. While we had no control over the weather, the manner in which citizens, emergency services, the media, relief organizations, and our employees responded meant the difference between safety and sorrow. Congratulations and thank you to each and every one of you for your part in helping the preferred city to weather the storm. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February the 18th. Hope you can attend. Chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. We are adjourned.